Okay, I think I'm gonna call this meeting to order. We have a forum and we have a lot of people on the meeting and I think it's only fair to get started. So I'm going to call meeting 1,607 to order. Before we start our standing report, I did want to welcome Kara Smith, who is our newest member, who was appointed from Sheffield. Let us give her hands.
Thanks, Jane.
If we can all be helpful, because we all know how much she doesn't know that we have to help her get to know. And forgive anything that comes across that isn't polished yet, because we're gonna give her at least a month. And she's also volunteered to critique our handbook, because she's the first person who has received the school committee handbook and can give us feedback on its relative use- usefulness to a new member. So Kara, did you wanna say any, anything in particular?
I'll be brief. I just wanted to, um, thanks everyone for welcoming me and reaching out and I look forward to working with you all and learning more about the details of the committee.
Alright, so now we have a standing report. Three sets of minutes, so I will take a motion for the approval of the minutes for meeting 1,604. Do I have a motion?
So moved, second.
Jeff and Art, does anybody have any suggestions for changes or additions? I don't see any hands up. So we'll take a roll call vote. Hannah?
Yes.
So Kara, you would have to abstain because you weren't here to comment. Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
I don't see Dennis on yet, so I'm the last vote, yes. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes from meeting 1,605.
So moved, second.
Okay, Art moved, deaf seconded. Are there any corrections for those minutes? See any hands up, so roll call vote again. I'll start in the house.
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Oh Bonnie?
Yes.
Jeff?
I mean Art?
Art? Yeah, okay, you don't get to vote. Hannah?
Yes.
Kara? You can practice abstaining.
Abstain?
Yeah, that's right. Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Dennis, we're just sitting on the minutes for meeting 1,605. Do you wanna vote for that? Dennis? Alright, I'll proceed to me. Yes. Now, Dennis, can you hear us? Alright, um, I'll take a motion for the school committee minutes of meeting 1,606.
So moved, second.
Any comments? I believe these are the first minutes that were taken by the company. And what stood out to me is that if we have something we wanna make sure is in the minute, we probably need to take a motion if we come into a consensus on something is not going to bring it into the minutes in particular. So I think as we're going through our business today, if there's something that we're discussing that we wanna be sure is recorded, I think it needs to be framed as a motion. Okay? Alright, so I see our student representative. Oh, I'm doing wonderfully, okay. Roll call vote, Hannah?
Yes.
Kara?
Abstain?
Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Dennis here. Dennis, can you raise your hand if you hear? Oh, okay, can you vote?
I think so, yes.
I'm waiting for you to say you approve or disapprove of these minutes.
I approve.
Thank you. Bonnie?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Dennis?
I abstain, I wasn't here.
Okay, Jeffrey?
Yes.
And Jane, yeah. Alright. Now going on to the student representative report. Jessica, do you have a report for us tonight?
Um, so we talked about how the seniors and juniors were extremely happy and excited for the prom that's happening tomorrow. We also talked about, I guess, wrapping up the school year and with the scholarship that is coming around. We're gonna discuss about that next meeting, which is, I believe, like the first week of June. But that's what we have, so.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions for Jessica?
Jessica, could you remind us what the scholarship is for, the amount?
Um, we haven't, we wanted to, want to give it to a student from, of course, Mount Everett, but we haven't decided, like, who is eligible for it. And I'm not even sure about, like, the quantity of it yet. But there was definitely a lot of, I guess, controversy on, like, who should get it and and so we're gonna talk about that next meeting.
Is there a process set up?
Yeah.
They're working on the process?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is the first time the student council, one of their roles was to get a scholarship. And so they're trying to still figure out the parameters of that.
I'm gonna relay what Jesse just said. Did you hear what Jesse just said?
Probably not.
Jesse said this is the first time the students have had a chance to weigh in on a scholarship decision. So they're allowing them ample time to work through the criteria and the processes kicking. So it's really in their hands. I think in future, if somebody is speaking from back here, you need to come up. I have heard, if you're having trouble hearing us, please let us know. Our technology is only so good, I guess. We have a student spotlight tonight?
Mr. Miller has gotta come up and introduce him.
So I'm here.
Anyway, sir.
Alright, cool. Okay, so can everybody hear me? I prepared a short video clip here, just to give you a little bit of context. Berkshire Pulse, the education dance center located in Houston, Texas, is a community partner of ours, has been working with the school district since before my time, but since I've been here, they have done a dance and drumming residency with the second graders. And so I had the privilege of participating a little bit and then interviewing some of our students. In order for the short clip, I'm gonna share momentarily, we have a Trey, no, Taryn Hyde, Robert Swan, Isabel Kiefer, and then Tyra Warren. I just asked them, you know, with very little prep, you know, what they took away from the experience. And then just wanna also shout out to some of our own educators who both teach here but also work with Berkshire Pulse. You know, they have an incredible array of after-school offerings and they're always willing and able to be creative about coming into the school and bringing arts and dance education alive. So now Mr. Thompson is gonna share a little video clip.
Alright, hi, Taryn. Can you please tell me what you learned in the drumming?
In drumming, we learned all the names of the drums. And like the noises that the drums made, what they're made out of. Some of them were like made out of skins, stuff.
What kind of, was it? What kind of skin?
Cow skin, goat skin.
And where are these drums from? Was there a particular place or?
Different places.
Cool.
A lot of different places.
And what did you, um, did you, uh, let's see, what did you like about it?
I liked, um, my favorite part was when we were, um, just doing this thing that goes walking, 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 running. So you go.
And are you mimicking animals walking and running, or what was the beat?
It was like.
Awesome. Is there anything else I should know?
Dance. He, he would say things about this old, older dance that they had when they would go mining in someplace. And then they would slap their boots and then do this little dance thing.
Cool. And what was it called again?
Um, I don't know what it's called, but it's called, but our teacher in drumming called it the gummy boot dance.
The gummy, okay. Uh, what was something else that you liked about it?
I mean, I liked it sort of because it just wasn't associated with drumming, just old culture, cultural.
Yeah.
And I liked that.
And, um, let's see, was it, was it hard or were you, were you a natural? Was it pretty easy?
Well, it's tough, cuz he told us one step, like slap the gummy boot, but then he kept adding things like claps and knees. And then he, you had to slap the back of your foot.
Okay.
Your hand. And then you had, you had to start walking while doing all of it. And, and then you had to start singing the song that goes with it, and it's tough.
If you had to teach someone, let's say, like your brother or sister, how to do the drumming, do you think you could do that?
I could be meh.
Meh, like, okay. Alright, is there anything else you wanna tell me about it?
Um. No, that's about all I can describe about the gummy boot dance.
Alright, great, thank you.
It's really fun. I like gummy. I thought it was gonna be just straight drumming, but then we got to do a cool African dance. And I think that was really cool. And I liked that there were so many different types of drums.
Oh, tell me a little bit about the dance.
So you would slap, they had gummy boots, you would slap the boots and then you put your foot down and then you clap it. And then you slap your hand onto your knee and then you put your foot down and do the same with the other leg.
Great. So all in all, I'm getting the impression that you had a fun time?
Yes.
Okay. What's something else you learned that you didn't know you would learn about drumming or about?
I thought we were gonna do like some cool, um, thing they would do and like if they had like things where they would gather a bunch of people and do all the one thing, but we got to do a few different rhythms. And I thought that was cool.
If you could do more of this drumming in school, would you wanna do more of it?
Definitely.
Okay, you gotta let your teachers know then, okay? Alright, is there anything else you wanna tell me about what you liked or what you learned?
Well, I think it was cool that there, um, that we got to do some all different types, like every day we got to do a different type. All the Fridays, we got to do a different type of drum.
Okay, so you learned about a lot of different, different drums. Do you remember the names of any of the drums?
There was one called a buguru tail. There was a, there was one called a, there's one called a, I think a banga.
A banga? Am I saying it right? A boogaroo? That's the first one? Boogaroo.
And he tells us the names and it's a fun experience.
Okay, it was fun. Um, if you could do it again, would you wanna do it again or would you try to do a different instrument? What do you think?
I think I wanna try a different instrument.
And what was exciting about the drums? Where was the drumming from?
Some was from Africa. I don't know if the other ones came from.
Did you, did you think it was easy or hard, or would you, how would you describe actually learning?
It was like in the middle.
Somewhere in the middle?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, who do you think was a better drummer, Ms. D'Angelo or Ms. Galusha?
Ms. D'Angelo.
Ms. D'Angelo, okay. Can I tell you said that? No, okay, I won't say that. Okay. And, um, uh, what do you, what did you love about it mostly? What do you think was the most fun part?
The most fun part is like when we're all drumming together and counting by threes, twos, fours. It was fun.
Was it hard?
Interesting.
Thank you.
They're all willing participants, although I interviewed them during recess, which is a precious time. Thanks.
Very interesting.
Thank you very much for that treat and the time you put in, put together. Alright, so now we have public comments. Um, we've already reserved five minutes for classroom. If there's anyone else, I'd just like to know how many people who are observing are planning on taking advantage of the three-minute public conference option, so I can sort of see how we're doing. So I see Elizabeth O'Donnell, Susan Smith, hands up. Anyone else? Alright, thank you. Okay, Lucy, you, you're on the floor.
Thanks, Jane. Thanks for recognizing me. As Chair of the Regional School District Planning Board, I've been asked by our Community Outreach Subcommittee to speak tonight because we think it important that you have correct facts about what it is the Planning Board is doing and how it is operating. Formed in March of 2020 by, sorry, is there a problem with the sound?
No, we can hear you.
Okay, great. We were formed in March of 2020 by the eight-member towns that comprise the Berkshire Hills and Southern Berkshire Regional School Districts. And we have a statutory mandate to study both the financial and educational advisability of consolidating the two districts. It's really important to understand that we are a study group only. We have no authority to make any change. Our mandate is to report our findings to the select boards of the eight-member towns. And only the voters of our towns can make any decision to consolidate. From the start, the Planning Board agreed to examine a number of options across a broad spectrum of possibilities. From potential full consolidation of K through 12 on one end of that spectrum to increased collaboration and sharing of services on the other. With other options in between, including the possible merger of just the high schools. The Board formally adopted that approach with the unanimous support of your school committee members very early on and has repeated that intention in every public communication since. Based on the discussion we heard from your last school committee meeting, it appears that there are a number of misconceptions about us. I've only got a few minutes to speak, so I'm not going to be able to address all of them. I'll address the four I think are most important. First, it was suggested that in virtually every vote at the Planning Board, votes divide with Southern Berkshire School Committee members on one side of the vote and everybody else on the other. That's actually not the case. In the 11 full Planning Board meetings that we have had since our inception, 19 out of 23 substantive votes we've taken were unanimous. And if you look at the four votes that were not unanimous, including Jane's very first motion to nominate me as the Chair of the Board, on three of the four votes, your school committee members either voted unanimously with a majority or they split. So there's actually been only one vote where all Southern Berkshire School Committee members voted no and others voted yes. And that was on a motion made by George McGurn, who's the Chair of the Operations Subcommittee, to expedite the earlier agreed process of selecting our consultants because we had, very unfortunately, found ourselves with some very tough and specific time constraints tied to the state grant. So while it is true that there have been some differences of opinion on process, the extent of those differences is not nearly so large as was suggested. Second, there was a statement that finance subcommittee meetings were scheduled during the day and not accessible, and a suggestion was made that this was intentional so as to exclude people. In fact, no finance subcommittee meeting has ever been scheduled during the day. They have all been held in the evening. And while there have been some other subcommittee meetings scheduled during the day, that was done primarily to accommodate the schedules of the superintendents and others who have a lot of evening commitments. And of course, all of our meetings are posted 48 hours ahead, are open to the public, and are often attended by people other than subcommittee members. Third, there was a suggestion that there was something illegal about our meetings because we let community members participate in our meetings. Under the open meeting law, public participation in meetings is not only permitted, it's encouraged. We understand you have very strict rules here about when the public can speak and for how long, which I fully understand because you've got a lot on your plate. But that's all within the discretion of your committee and the Chair. I've exercised my discretion as Chair of the Planning Board to allow community participation whenever time allows. Finally, and for me the most important, many statements were made speculating that others on the Planning Board don't care about education or don't care about education as much as you do and have already made up their minds. I think everyone here would agree that none of us can read the minds of others, other than ourselves. But what we can do is listen to what people say. And when we had an outside facilitator conduct a survey of why Planning Board members had volunteered their time to serve on this board, "educational quality, innovation, educational opportunity, and improving educational outcomes," those were all their words, were cited among the top reasons. Were financial issues and challenges also cited as important? Of course they were. But the majority of Planning Board members said then, and continue to say in more recent meetings, that educational considerations need to drive the process. I personally agree with that, and I know that your school committee members do as well. In closing, we heard a number of your school committee members say they want to closely scrutinize the reports generated by our consultants, who I believe Jane and Bonnie agree are very able, experienced, and dedicated professionals. I absolutely agree the scrutiny needs to be applied both to our consultants' work and to our own work because we have a collective responsibility here to follow the data, report accurate facts, and to pursue the mandate we have gotten from our eight towns, which is to look at whether or not there are different operational models that might better serve our kids and by extension, our communities. Thank you for giving me the time to speak today. I know you are taking this matter up later in your meeting. And I'm gonna stay in case there are any questions that you would like to address to me at that time.
Thank you very much, Lucy. I wasn't, I think Susan's hand was up second, so Susan, you have three minutes to speak.
Thank you for the time, Jane. I appreciate it. I'm glad we have the opportunity to speak on this. When I heard the report that was given at the last school committee meeting, I was, I was, I was very surprised. I was not expecting that kind of tone or rhetoric. And I just wanted to state clearly, I'm speaking as Susan Smith. I am a member of the Regional Planning Committee. I am a resident of the town of New Marlboro. I am one of your constituents. And I just, there were, there, I think my only point is it is all of our responsibility to get out the true and accurate facts about the Regional Planning Committee. And I truly hope that that's the approach the school committee takes in the future. I won't dwell on the comments that were made. It was just very unfortunate, but it is so very true that misinformation was generated out of your meeting. And I hope that we can work together to eliminate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. And Elizabeth?
Hi, um, it's, I, my question was, I was trying to figure out, how do you learn when those meetings take place? So it's interesting, that's what my question is about. Where do you find, where is it posted when the, when the Regional School District Planning Board meetings are?
They're on our website, and soon there'll be a website for the Board that's independent and it's also on the website of the Berkshire Hills Regional School District.
Thank you.
Alright, I don't see any other hands up, so thank you very much for your input. And we're going on to our new business, which is to approve, to participate in school choice in FY '22. Do I have a motion? Bonnie?
A motion to approve participation in the school choice program following the guidelines of what the superintendent presents to us.
I'll second that.
Okay, so that was Bonnie and Dennis's second thing. And in our packets, we have some school choice information, which I assume we'll be hearing more about from our superintendent.
Actually, that's just really the only vote that we need. By June 1st, we have to report to the state whether or not we choose to participate in the school choice program from K to 12. So what you have in your packet on 7A is what the tables put together for projected openings at each grade level. That's in yellow, and you can see where we have already started to receive some applications or different grade levels there. But what, what we really need is the school committee to take the vote that says we are participating in the school choice program for FY '22, grades K through 12. That's, that's what needs to happen.
Jeffrey?
Um, when do we start seeing the numbers for pre-K, early K, and registrations for that?
They're rolling in as we speak.
Rolling in.
So, uh, can you say that out?
They're rolling in as we speak.
Um, and is, and what is that process of reaching out to families? I guess this is also in district. And what is that process of reaching out to families? I guess this is also in district of. Knowing kids that, that making clear of like what the the cutoffs are for early K.
Right, there was a, there was a whole registration packet that was posted on our website, social media. That's been ongoing.
Sent to, directly to families through the census.
Yeah.
We got the census and set right.
Okay, thank you.
Question, in terms of an overall of past few years. Can you see any trends in. The openings that are now available at these school chores?
I mean, since I've been here, I think we always have space. So I, I definitely see the younger grades is is where we seem to be having a lot of interest. So it's definitely noticeable in the, in in the younger grades for sure. So we're keeping an eye on it and I think people are taking advantage of the upcoming screening processes and. You know, we're looking forward to seeing solidifying a lot of these numbers. But we just wanted to give you the picture at the moment. So. June first is the requirement by the state. We just want to make sure we get that deadline so we can accept whoever might fit into the open spots we have.
Any other questions? Any hands up? Dennis?
Can't hear you. Muted.
Jeffrey, unmute your phone.
Yes, uh, looking at the chart that was in the, in the packet on seven A. You know, I'm a little confused in that it, you know, it has two columns on the right, one of what the opening. Projected openings are and then one on what we've received. And what was interesting was that the, the one, the first one there. Basically said that there's no openings projected for pre-K. But we've said we've received one application already. So does that? Does that mean that, you know, is that kind of the thinking that you can always squeeze one other, one other student in?
No, we don't typically, we don't choice pre-K, but we have a staff member with. With a pre-K student. So that, that's part of the contract that we will accept. A staff member's child if there's real.
Okay, thank you.
Bonnie?
In terms of South Egremont, have you been hearing anything of numbers of people? I see it's all question marks.
We have, uh, the enrollment in South Egremont is quite substantial already. I think we have twelve confirmed K and. And at least two early K as defined by what we had right now. So. The numbers are very strong in the younger.
All right, seeing no, no other hand, we will go on to item C. Thank you, everybody, for hosting me. All right, okay, so let's take a roll call vote and Bonnie, you get to go first. Park?
Yes.
Jenna?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Carrie, you can vote on this.
Yes.
Uh, Carrie Anne?
Yes.
And Dennis?
Yes.
Danil, I've been skipping you.
Oh, it's okay. Yes.
Okay. Now, we have another vote coming up. Possible changes to end of year activities, including graduation and Jesse is coming forward to inform us before we vote.
Well, actually, I'd like to start and we're gonna, we're gonna team tackle this because I think it's important that we. Just bring the latest and greatest information to the school committee so that they're aware. So last week, we have sometimes weekly meetings with the commissioner on upcoming changes to protocols and. It was very clear as he was coming off the half an hour meeting with us that the focus had been. On the changes that the governor proposed, which I think are going into place for the twenty-ninth of May. About mask wearing outdoors and that was the information that I had. Shared with families in the district as soon as we received it. However, notice the date on that is that's because higher ed. They didn't want to mess up all the higher ed ceremonies that were planned or not planned because it takes quite, as you know, quite a process to plan graduations. And so higher ed said, don't do that until the end of May. However, we now have put our graduation plan in place. Shared it with the school committee, talked with boards of health and. You know, and now the game is changing with less than a week for all of our ceremonies. So what we wanted to, I'll let Jesse give, give the conversations that we've had, but. We want to both honor as much as we can people coming to an event, but we also want to. Maintain safety and to whatever degree we can. So I think it's going to be kind of a combination proposal. We have had the discussions with public health with. Those people who would be helping us monitor the process, but I'll let Jesse talk about what we are proposing.
Thank you. We've had quite a few conversations about how best to move forward. And those included the board of health. I also talked to Chief Munson of the Police Department. We think it's important to keep our plan of putting families in boxes. On the field and continuing to have six family members in a box. That way we can ensure that each family has six seats there. We feel that using the boxes will allow us. Just in general, have it be safer and then allow people to bring additional family members who would then. Sit behind the boxes. And we would ask that those additional family members bring their own chairs. And we would have them back, it's going to be essentially four rows of boxes. Twelve in each row and then we'll have two additional boxes in one, in a fifth row that we'll use for any media. And then we would have people to be allowed to sit. You know, across those last two boxes and then further back getting closer to the baseball field. We feel that's the safest way to do it. We feel it's the fairest way. People need to bring more than six people. And as I said before, it ensures that every family gets six guests. As close to the stage as we've possibly been doing.
What you had written in your notes.
Uh, Bonnie, you can.
Oh, sorry, that's right. What you had written in your notes said that this year the graduates will be able to sit together. Is that now still true?
Yeah, we're gonna put them separate. We're gonna put the chairs three feet apart and probably, you know. Appropriate distancing off to sort of the left-hand side of where we had the podium last year. And then we put all of our guests that are up front, which would include any of the school committee members who came. And the people that work on graduation. That the others would be to the right side of the podium. So that would allow each family to have six people. The, each student would not be in the box.
So they're obviously not counted as part of the six.
No, no, and neither is our band who is going to be.
That was my next.
Yeah, the band is going to be to the right of the crowd. Will be twenty-five feet away from the closest person in the audience. They're going to be distanced ten feet apart and there, it gives them the opportunity to play two songs, which they've worked hard at. Even though they haven't really been able to play as they run away with the school year, but we thought it was important to give those seniors one last chance to play. And they're going to do a little practice of that after the award ceremony that we do for the seniors. The band performance and award ceremony is seven o'clock Tuesday night. So they'll play there and then they'll play graduate.
Well, I just have to say, having attended last night's National Honor Society. The flexibility that you showed, the ability at the last minute to move the whole event. And to let all of these kids plus the ones we missed. A prior National Honor Society induction was absolutely great. It was definitely the up of my week.
I appreciate, I appreciate you saying that. And, you know, it's, the kids have been great about it because with all these events. We're continuing to make changes on the fly and they've been really good about doing what we ask. And we're excited tomorrow about the prom experience. And we're going to find a way to do it. In the rain because tomorrow looks like the best day for a bunch of days. So. Flexibilities of kids here.
On the Tuesday evening event, is that something that we can attend in person or do we just do what's virtual?
No, you certainly can. Yeah, you certainly can. We're going to do it out on the, on the field that we're doing graduation. And, you know, families will sit in the same boxes that they will on graduation. We've done a lottery. I just pulled names out of the hat like we did last year.
Just, just one last thing, in case anyone is watching this and thinks we have boxes. It's a square drawn with chalk or whatever on the ground.
Yeah, we, we paint, we painted with the line painter that we use for athletics. So the box. Originally, we had talked about doing six by nine, but due to the changes in regulations and things like that, we'll end up doing six by six boxes. Which will allow us to get everybody just a little bit closer to the stage and the back rows won't be as far away.
All right, are you ready to vote on approving changes?
I, I move that we approve the changes for end of year activities. As presented by Principal Paul.
Thank you Bonnie. Do we have a second? Second from Jeffrey. Any further discussion? All right, Hannah?
Yes.
You need Cara?
Uh, Cara, yes.
Yes.
Uh, Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Hannah? Dennis, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, Danil?
Yep.
Jenna?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item C is a discussion regarding Juneteenth holiday. Possible amendments to the FY twenty-two calendar, which is going to require a possible vote.
So. In speaking with council, we just, we're actually going to ask for an amendment to vote this year's calendar, just to officially. Get the Juneteenth holiday, even though it's not going to have an effect as our school year ends before that. But the council advised us to actually amend the calendar for, to include Juneteenth. And then also, just for our planning purposes for families, we always like to keep the, the calendar updated. So we should. Add that if there is a possibility that we will get to that day next year on the calendar. So. We included both the FY twenty-one amendment and the FY twenty-two calendar amendment to include. Juneteenth. We are, we will be negotiating, as it seems like we always are. Each year as we extend our contracts, but we actually are officially doing negotiations next year for our contracts. So we can talk about the details of what that looks like. It's, it's a negotiated. Item, but at least it will be on the calendar and people can do their planning around that.
I move to add Juneteenth to the calendar for twenty twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two.
Thank you Jeffrey, a second?
Second.
Second from Park. Does anybody have further questions?
What does that mean?
Juneteenth is.
I know what it is.
Day holiday, yeah.
Yeah, but what does that mean in terms of school? I mean, is it just?
There would be no school on that day.
It would be no school.
That's correct.
Any other questions? Uh, Bonnie?
Yeah, this is. This is based on the state, state law that goes in, went into effect?
It's went into effect. That's why he would like it, it went into effect for this year. So we should officially report it officially.
Thank you Bonnie.
It just happens on Saturday. So, yeah.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. And now we're ready to vote. Dennis?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Cara?
Yes.
Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Dennis?
Was that Dennis? Did you say Dennis? Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
And Jane, yes. So there is an unanimous vote for that. Uh, let's see, now we have set aside a little bit of time here. Because we don't have our summer calendar set. And I'm interested in entertaining suggestions for. Summer retreats and workshops in particular to work on our action plans. Uh, for anti-racism and anti-bias work that we started and any other issues that. People would like to use the summer. To work on, including possible curriculum review or other areas. And we can't, so I'm, I'm going to take some suggestions of hands come up to. Give us a list to work from and then we'll be looking for schedules. So I see Hannah's hand is up and Jeffrey's hand is up. Oh, she moved. All right, so Carrie Anne, I saw your hand first.
Uh, thank you. As a new member to the summer season, can you just describe if there are any changes in the summer? To the school committee as opposed to what we've seen during the year?
Yeah, go ahead Dennis.
Well, typically, you, you're, the meetings are not as regular. So that's, you know, you might have one in July, one in August. You know, something like that. But that doesn't mean you can't have workshops. And we, we have tried. To at least have one workshop that. Was a combined one, school committee, a, a school committee retreat day with. With administration to go over our strategy for continuous improvement and which kind of helps set my goals, which we haven't been able to really do. Over the last year, two years. So I'd love to get that one back on. That's typically end of August, beginning of September even. So that doesn't really affect the summer. But I'd like to just have you thinking about that one event as well in the summer schedule. But we need to set something for after our last June, so really July and August, what, what you'd like to do for schedules and then. And then from it.
Thank you.
Uh, Jeffrey?
Um, last year, like when we had this conversation, I believe, we had a workshop to kind of focus on one goal that was like. Beyond like the, the regular work.
Yeah.
And that decision that we made as a committee in that workshop was, let's look at. Creating that handbook for the new. Committee members to kind of improve that way. So I'm just trying to bring this back. I, I think it just. A workshop of kind of the sole purposes, is there a project that we need to. Put our, you know, the extra time that we have, which is not much, into that one extra goal to, to work on. Might be just a worthwhile agenda in itself and is a, is a workshop even and maybe what was the pond or something like that. So I, I, I think that would probably be a good use of time. And then I, I do support the anti-bias organizations. Training that we continue on that.
Bonnie?
Maybe if we could get some volunteers, I'd love us to have. A session with some faculty members and administrators. On communicating with our communities. And a whole, an outreach going beyond our community outreach committee, but. Looking at what are you doing to get our good message out? To the communities. And do you think we would be able to get any faculty volunteers to take part in that?
I think you'd have a better shot. I think you'd have a better shot in the fall, to be perfectly honest. I think some people are gonna wanna break, but you can have, you know, we have some people working in summer, but it's
Yes, thank you. That's Jeff.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I don't know. You could put it out there. I don't, I think, honestly, people are looking forward to some downtime this summer, and I don't know how much. But I, I, there's no, there's no harm in asking. I just, you know.
I was just thinking if there are some who are in because they're with summer school or doing something else, if we could initiate something that we can then carry forward with in the fall, it might be a, you know, sort of quiet downtime, or maybe
It might be something you could combine more with the one that I'm talking about in late August, beginning of September. You know, in that timeframe where people are back, you know.
Okay, just if we could have it under consideration and, you know, figure a way if other people in the school committee would like the idea to see if we wanna work on something like that. Because I really think it's incumbent upon us to do a better job of selling our district and our communities.
One of the things that Jeff has raised, newer members are not aware, that last year we had a workshop goal setting meeting, which was facilitated by an MASC consultant, Liz LeFond, who has been sort of a constant in our work. And I'm glad to be reminded that because of COVID and everything else, we did not set a goal for this year. And so we can wrap whatever our sort of codify what it is we wanna try to accomplish in the coming year. And the anti-bias could be our goal, or the communication could be our goal. But we, setting aside one thing that we really wanna look, look at carefully would be possibly the first meeting so that we, and hopefully it can be casual and enjoyable, but open to the book. Carrie Anne, is your hand still up or are you ready to make a suggestion?
I have a suggestion, or, or two, or three. I just wanted to support also that us having an opportunity to revisit the action plan that we created around anti-racism and then being able to sort of report out on various steps that we all committed to doing. And then there, in addition to the ADL training, there was, at one point Hannah and Jenna were doing research about an additional training that we could do. And there was some funding, I thought, available for that. So wondering if that could also get maybe put on our agenda to have a second training. And the third thing is, I'm particularly interested in getting to, wanting to better understand the challenges that rural communities face in public education right now and have been spending a lot of time trying to understand and read through Chapter 70. And in addition to reading through the 2019 Rural Policy Initiative that was created to, in order to better understand how to advocate for our rural school district and spending a lot of time understanding the way that our property values affect our school district. And I would just like for us to in some way create an opportunity for us to educate ourselves about how to understand our situation and advocate as best as we can for our school district.
Okay, thank you. I, then I'm going to create this list. And I think at our next meeting, we should agree to when we think the most of us are available to get together and how many of these get together we feel comfortable committing to. Because so far, we've had 100% attendance at all our workshops, and it's been a fantastic opportunity for us to move forward. But we have to be thoughtful about people's vacation plans and need for time to step back. So I'll put it on the agenda for next meeting to make some decisions about dates and choices. All right. Yes, Jen?
Question. Has the district done needs assessment of any kind?
That's a broad statement. Are you looking, when you say?
The reason, I'm sorry. But the reason I'm asking is because we are making suggestions, but based on what? Just our perceptions? Or do we have some data?
Well, we have our, you know, we, that's why I'm saying, I think what you're talking about is, is at the school committee level, what is your goal as school committee members? What's the one thing you wanna work on at the committee? One of the things that was suggested was that the school committee do their own self-evaluation, their own self-assessment on how things were working. I believe Liz suggested that last year we did work on the school committee handbook was what was chosen, but that, that was something. So as an administrative team, we have our retreat schedule for the summer, which involves us doing just that, taking a look at the data that we have after the end of this year and, and creating our goals that come out of that on how to improve the district. So I think at every level, that's the process that should be happening and that they should then all work together, which is why I'm hoping we'll have the, the one with us and the school committee in August and September when we're setting those goals together, the district goals. So I think that maybe that would be a good assessment, school committee assessment.
All right, so I thank you for the thought that you're gonna put into this and send to me so we can have a meaningful number of choices. And I guess be prepared to, if you have one particular item that you think you should pursue, be prepared to defend it and give us a good reason to choose that. Okay, so we're now going on to business managers' report. And I think we have something in our packet and we're waiting for Chris to Yeah, unmute and welcome, Chris.
Thank you. Okay, so I only have one item tonight. We have no warrants to approve this week, and we have no budget transfers. But we do have a $10,000 donation for the Mount Everett Library. This donation was made by Mark Trocci, I think is how we pronounce it. And he is giving $10,000 to purchase, in this particular case, reference volumes for the library. And he mentioned that he would plan to do it again in early 2022. So it's a very generous donation, and it needs the school committee approval to accept.
All right, I entertain a motion.
I'm moving to accept.
Accept. Dennis and Bonnie, does anybody have any further questions about this offer? Bonnie?
It's interesting that in 2021, it's all books. I wonder, as opposed to what?
Bonnie, I can't hear you.
I'm questioning in 2021, the fact of it all are cover books, records books. Did the librarian request this, you know, as opposed to or in conjunction with material being available online?
I don't know the answer to that. I have to be honest. This, this comes to me. I don't know if it was something worked out with the librarian or with the building principal. I'm sorry, I can't answer that.
Well, I really would, we have an answer coming from the back.
Yeah, I'm not sure I have the answer. But I can tell you that Mr. Trocci has done this before. In various ways, it's sort of in memory of this author, who this library has named after.
Exactly.
But I'm under the understanding that the agreement that he has in this, the way this works is she goes to Amazon and picks from the list that they have and can get the resources that she thinks would be most useful to our students. I can't answer whether or not there's any of that are electronic or if it's all print.
Okay, I would truthfully, given the size of it, like it to be confirmed for me that this is the librarian's choice.
It is. It says it in the, in the letter that she's gonna go through and check.
But it doesn't say anything about whether anything is available electronically and whether it's being considered. If you guys are satisfied.
Yeah, okay, we hear your concern.
No, I'm asking if Jesse and Beth are satisfied.
We're satisfied to have the opportunity. We will confirm what it, what that looks like afterwards. How's that? Is that helpful?
That's more than it.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion to accept.
Jane, I had a question.
I'm sorry, Hannah.
Um, thanks. I, I'm happy anytime I see that a librarian has an opportunity to select new materials for the library. Reading the letter, I just was, am I understanding it correctly? That the donation is a, Mark is making a private donation, but the materials are being purchased through his company? Or was I misunderstanding that?
I believe that's true. It says it's purchased from his Amazon Spectrum selling site.
I, I don't know enough about how donations usually function to know if that's a little funny or not. I just, I wanted to point it out and see if that was accurate.
I, I don't think there's anything wrong with the way it's being done because it's an authorized amount. It's very specific. You're, you're accepting that and how, you know, if you have a certain amount that's coming from, that's, you know, on a rather large gift card, but, you know, that kind of that theory that you're saying you have $10,000 and an Amazon gift card to be, to spend, it's, I don't see where there's an issue. You're accepting a very specific donation.
I see, Dennis?
I, I have a little, I have a concern that I think is along those same lines. And basically, you know, the, the, basically, the selection is being limited to whatever is on his selling site. And that may not necessarily be in the best interest of what the librarian thinks the books should be. So that, I, I have a little concern about that. I mean, you know, I've known the Trocci family for a long time. You know, I knew the father, especially since he lived just down the street from me. But, you know, that, you know, that, that makes it look just a little funny, you know? I, I think it'd be worthwhile seeing if, you know, if there's some other way that I, 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 I think that if we're gonna, it's, it's a great gift and a great donation to be made. But I, I think we wanna make sure that it's, it's also ends up being in the best long-range educational considerations for the, for the students, you know?
Dennis?
I mean, if the librarian, for this? Yeah, if the librarian is involved in making choices, my only, I mean, my only problem is, is she doing it on her own or is she getting some help? But isn't it true that when people donate, they, they usually put some guidelines attached to their donation? I mean, it, it happens all the time. Then they decide where she'd go and name the building after me if I give you so much money, you know? So, I mean, this is not unusual.
Thank you, Jess. Let me see, Bonnie has another question?
No, just a comment here. The librarian has chosen 25,000 titles. And it seems, I don't know how this works, because if going through his account, she's, will be getting $20,000 worth of books material for only $10,000. I assume, having watched her, that I shouldn't do, do that, make that assumption, that she always has said when I've asked her things about consulting with staff in her selection. So I think, you know, we can confirm it. But I, I don't feel it's really restricted if there are 25,000 options and given how expensive books are.
Yeah.
I believe too, that going through the site, there's no shipping.
Yes.
So that's part of that shipping cost.
There are no shipping costs associated with it, so it's 100% for the book.
And it says that in the letter, no shipping, and we're getting double the amount as opposed to if you or I went to that, you know.
All right, are we prepared to vote or Carrie Anne, do you have an additional comment?
It's actually a question. I'm just wondering, Beth, this might be a question for you. If, given our focus on anti-racism and our commitment to examining, not necessarily the curriculum, but thinking about what's coming into the school and wanting to prioritize marginalized voices, is there, how does the school deal with when this type of an award comes integrating that prioritization?
So I can tell you, prior to this, we had just received an incredibly large shipment of exactly those types of materials for the library. They've been working to really enhance all the materials that we have. And I think they've been doing that through work with the student body and the faculty and staff and the textbook inventory, if I'm saying that correctly, that they've been working on, which is one of the things I'll talk about a little later when we try to pull together the ad hoc curriculum subcommittee in the, in the first two weeks of June. So we're, we're talking about two things there and we were gonna, one of those things was the, the review that we have been working on. So they're very, very much including that lens in everything they're doing and they're ordering materials at, at all levels in the library. They're really trying to improve the selection. And like I said, prior to this very generous donation, we had already invested lots of, of our funds specifically to do just that. So it, it is a priority and one we continue, will continue to add to.
Thank you.
All right, so are we ready to vote? You have a motion? We have a second? Bonnie?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Jenna?
Yes.
Hannah? Hannah?
Yes. Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Hannah? Here?
No.
Danell? Danell, are you there?
Yep, yep, I'm here. Yes, couldn't unmute. Yep. Yes.
Jeffrey had believed he wasn't feeling well, so he is not able to vote. Thank you.
I didn't get to vote.
I didn't call your name? Oh, Carrie Anne.
Yes.
Well, I didn't speak when my name was called, if it was called. That's terrible.
We all imagined we heard you, but that's okay. Yeah.
Do we send a thank you letter?
I think that's in order. I will do that.
Okay, wonderful. And, yeah.
My apologies. This is Mary Margaret. I'm your minute taker. I missed who motioned and seconded this vote.
Well, that may be because we didn't do it.
Yes.
I moved.
No, you definitely did.
Okay, so Bonnie moved and.
And I thought Art.
Art seconded. Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
No problem. That we, we appreciate, uh, opportunities to clarify. All right, so we're now on business with district member towns, an update on the regional school district planning board. Uh, last, uh, we heard a little bit about, uh, the reaction to our discussion part of, about the planning board. Uh, we did ask, um, Bonnie volunteer to take the suggestions from the full committee about how to express uh, concerns that we had about the planning board. Uh, she's just delivered the, um, the draft for us to give feedback.
Are you going to project it, or shall I send it now up, up here? I'll pass this to these, that's, this is it. But, um, sure, I can't actually send it to the four people who are there.
Right, right. For those who, uh, the public who are attending, you'll be hearing our decisions about it, um, as we go through the draft, uh, and uh, to see if, uh, if, if we feel like it reflects, uh, how we want to, um, communicate with the planning board and the public.
Okay, what, um,
So I'm just reading it for the first time.
Right, and what I want to do, what I want to do is state that in terms of this document, I rewrote it, I cannot tell you the number of times, and then after, um, speaking with Lucy on Tuesday and then attending yesterday's uh, communications subcommittee, I completely changed it again. And it does, it changed a lot. You may totally reject it. It changed a lot from what we had discussed. And, um, Carrie Anne was yesterday's uh, communications subcommittee as an observer, so they may be able to add some additional information. But the issue that, uh, drove the letter that you're reading for me is that I felt, and I'm listening to someone, Susan who spoke, um, and others, I felt that we should take the position that what we really are looking at is the need for a facilitator. And I decided, and this is me, you may trash the whole thing and I won't be insulted, when Tara White, who was there, spoke, when Susan spoke, to me, it was a sense, we have to move ahead if this group is going to work. And my concern very much was, and I'll just say this before sending it to you guys could read it, when I completely rewrote it, I wrote it with the idea, I'm happy that what we expressed two weeks ago. I didn't know the feelings of a lot of people on our committee, and I think there's much to be gained. And I hope that as a larger group, um, we're able to move in that direction. I know there are those of us who've been put off by the language of some. So it, this may appear overly facilitatory, and I'm shutting up so I could send this, or I might have to ask Chris to send it.
Share to the.
To the screen? All right, so why don't I do that? I sent it to Jane, all right, so.
Well, I didn't see it before I got here, but I have it in my email.
You wanna do that while I send, send the email? Kara, can you give me the email that you have?
I think for the public, um, what we're looking at is that this is not, uh, a letter from Bonnie in particular, but we can craft it so that it is from the full board, and she's, uh, made a draft for us. Wow, fifteen. So am I sorting it?
Bring it up and I'll make you. Go over some of your screen, that works.
Okay.
Yep, yep. There's one that I sent you, I sent it to you in a larger font so that it would show up.
My first screen share of my life.
Wow, exciting. So, tell me if I'm missing anyone. Hannah, Dennis, Jeff, who's left, Danell, Kara, oh, Carrie Anne. What are we doing with this? Are we, are we looking at?
Well, we're looking at it to see if it reflects a message that we would like to send to the full planning board. And if it doesn't, then I'm going to entertain, uh, suggested changes from the members and put it back in Bonnie's hands for a final draft to be agreed with.
I personally would like more time.
Okay. Yeah, um, but if you do have any suggestions now, uh, we'll, we'll be able to. I'm looking for hands up for anybody who's having trouble reading.
Oh, oh, we see.
Anybody who, who needs assistance. I don't see anything. As yet.
Oh, you know what? My whole computer got switched on, I think, to, to the school district. Is that possible? Yeah, it all of a sudden wouldn't. I'll try it again. I'm not hooked up to the district. Yeah, it says, "Speak, yes, the library."
If you all there in the library are saying something that you want us to hear, I can't hear anything that you're saying.
Oh, it's, it's not substantial. It's a little mumbling.
Oh, it just.
Well, we can't hear you anyway.
Yeah, okay, so I think he was just making sure that Bonnie is able to send out a, a copy of the letter to the people on the school committee, and the rest of you are seeing it on your screen.
You should move your seat a bit over to the smaller.
Right. And I should keep my hand on my mask if they can scroll themselves, or?
Uh, no, they can actually do.
Okay, so I'm gonna just show, I think there's a third page here.
Oh, that time looks quick. Jane, one, one minute, I'd like to speak to it. And why I took this, but let everybody finish.
Well, I think I'm gonna hear feedback from, from maybe from before you.
Okay.
When, uh, when members, um, put their hands up, uh, I'll know that they have finished and they have something, uh, some comment to make. Sorry. Dennis, we're ready. Okay, thank you. Chris, can I see him?
Everybody, yeah, for you.
You know, I think you wanna make a comment?
Yeah, yeah.
Question? How about we try thumbs up if you're done reading? In the reaction box. And, uh, thumbs up here if you've, if you've finished reading. Dennis, did you get a chance to read the whole document? Okay, all right, so. Thank you. Looks like we're waiting to Hannah. And Kara. Okay. I think we're ready to, uh, have comments and suggestions and, um, I'll start with, um, Dennis, you had your hand up first that you were done. Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I, I think it's fine. I mean, it's, uh, uh, you know, it's unfortunate that, you know, the, the, the kids in the sandbox had a little bit of a, uh, you know, some sand tossed at one another, but, you know, I, I think it's a good letter.
Thank you. Danell, did you wanna say anything?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Um, yeah, I think it was well-written, and I, I agree with much of what Bonnie has said. Um, I don't, I don't apologize for anything that we or I said in the last couple meetings. I thought it was important to get out. Um, I, I think it covers everything. Yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I'll come back to you if something else occurs to you, uh, Carrie Anne.
Um, I feel like you just read my mind that I was gonna raise my hand, and before I did it, you picked on me, so that's impressive. I, um, Bonnie, you, you did, um, a good job writing the letter, so thank you. Um, I think it's important to be really specific about what we're asking. So in terms of, you know, the sentence, you know, of like asking for a facilitator, um, I'm sorry, I can't find this sentence right now. Um, but from what I, you know, what I heard last night at the meeting that I was listening in on is that I think that some folks, and also from the public comment period here, is that, um, some folks from the regional school district planning board would probably say that they've already done this, either in terms of having a facilitator, or that the environment is open communication with respect for all members and is a safe space. And so it is, um, by having two groups that have very different experiences, I think it's very important that, um, we get a little bit more specific of, not in terms of hashing out details, as you said in this letter, Bonnie, but of, of what, what's needed to move forward, and what does it look like to create those spaces? And it's also, um, I mean, I, I, and maybe this is just me needing to participate a bit more in the regional school district planning board. I'll be interested to hear how the process moves forward given the change in the grant status.
Okay, thanks. Um, let's see, uh, Hannah, did you wanna add anything?
Um, I actually think Carrie Anne kind of was on the, shared kind of what I wanted to say, which, um, is that I think in the, maybe the first paragraph, and really in what this letter focuses on, maybe should be what we're asking for, and if we're asking for facilitation, um, I would hope that that would allow some of this honesty to be a little easier, um, if that need was met, and obviously, it's a need if people are, you know, if a lot of people who've sat through those meetings are strongly feeling the way members of our school committee are, and other people are saying that they haven't had that experience at all. So, um, I guess I'm just reiterating what Carrie Anne just shared.
Okay, then, uh, Kara, I'll give you an opportunity to speak. You may feel too new to the situation, but, uh, you're welcome to, uh, sign in.
Thanks, Jane. Yeah, I don't have any comments at this point. Um, I'm feeling like I'm getting just kind of caught up to speed with, with this.
Okay, uh, thank you. Um, Dennis?
Um, I think I'm one of the members who did not experience any of this firsthand.
Oh, yeah, you weren't here.
Um, no, I mean, as part of the work in the planning, but others. So, but I, I agree with Carrie Anne. I, I prefer personally and I have issues with being too succinct, maybe brusque. The point, whatever, get to the point, get to what it is that you want. I, I'll tell you this one sentence, I really recommend that Bonnie think about it. This, as long as we have people who will not openly say that they are only, and that's quite a charge. And I, I'm not sure that I, I would wanna say that. That's that particular sentence. I, I don't know.
Yep. Art, you have something to add? Alright. So I think in terms of us helping Bonnie to come up with something that we all feel should go out, I'm just gonna summarize what's already been said. I'm hearing facilitation as something that everyone, most people feel is, I'll go back. Several people have talked about facilitation to help people say what they're feeling and not without fear. And I'm hearing Jenna say, we don't have to be particular about supposing how people are feeling, but I think to say that we need a facilitator and not be specific possibly about how that would work, I guess we would suggest that it was put to Jake and his team to provide that in the, in the beginning of his work somehow to bring us together so we can work positively with him. I don't know whether that's what you were referring to, that it wasn't specific enough. But now Bonnie, respond again.
That's very, very helpful, you know, what I heard and I think part in writing this, I'm thinking of how this is being addressed to the full planning board. And the full planning board has been dealing with the issue of what a facilitator would do. They've also reviewed the RFP, RFQ for a facilitator. So I, I feel in a way I can, in the third paragraph down, and really emphasize to that end, we are choosing to strongly support the need for facilitator to be hired in short order and to set up a safe environment to share community with respect for. To build, to build that in what we expect, that might address the issues. I really, as writing that part, was relying in, actually on Lucy's leadership in terms of that and pushing the need for the facilitator. Unfortunately, we haven't received bids for a facilitator. And it's interesting, Jenna, as you point out that last one, you'll note that I put at the end, this is really sensitive stuff, right? And if, if, I, I wanted to put that in to say, these are some of the things people are not verbalizing. If the committee wants that chunk out, because when I wrote it, I reacted as you did. Do I leave it in there? To show how that really is what's going on? Or if, if I'm writing on behalf, you know, so that you can approve it? If what we're saying is take it out, I have no problem. It's us. It's not, it's not Bonnie. And I can definitely build up the facilitator and can actually reference what Lucy and the Funding Source Subcommittee put in the RFQ in order, you know, because not everybody here is on that committee, to be able to say, this is what we're expecting will happen. And the truth is, if we don't deal with those things that make you uncomfortable. I mean, Jane and I have spoken about it, others have, if we don't deal with this, we're going to spend months and thousands of dollars hiding issues and in some ways, as I say, might as well toss in the towel. So I'm not advocating for anything to say the way I appreciate the fact that, you know, the, the positive feedback. But I definitely, based on whatever consensus you get from the group, I would, if the consensus is what Jenna's has said, get that as long as, in that third paragraph, as long as to the end of that paragraph gone.
Yeah.
And build on, to that end, we are strongly, and put in a bit of the language from the RFQ for a facilitator.
That make it more specific. Jenna?
Again, let me underline that I have not experienced what you have experienced.
Right.
So I don't have the context. But if I got this letter, am I, am I using the right word? My handfuls would, you know, and I would go on the defensive. And I think that the point that you're making is, you know, about a facilitator. I think that's a good point, without putting people on the defensive about this. So I don't know, Bonnie, how, I mean, that's my recommendation.
So you're saying if I took out that part of the examples, would it address your concern?
That would address, yeah. But I think we need to look at some other little things that may be in there, that may also, people may find, it would turn them off rather than have them listen to what you need. I guess that's.
I just wanna respond, given how far the school committee had given the directive two weeks ago, in terms of what we were to do in this letter, I basically have gone 160 degrees in the other direction without, and as I say, without rehashing all those things, we're not presenting depositions to this group.
You don't wanna do that.
But I didn't feel comfortable going so far as to completely eliminate what our school committee's concern is. So I think, you know, if we're not going to have it as a final version tonight, or whatever the school committee decides, if you decide I should rewrite based upon decisions, you know, we discussed, the issues we discussed tonight, the recommendations, I don't think this should take. I mean, this is taking, I hate to tell you, especially after hearing your community feedback, getting phone calls and my discussion with Lucy and last night's meeting where I was clearly dumb-dodged. And not because it was just me, it was a lot of people's sensitivities regarding reactions and the behaviors of our school committee. So if they meant it personally to me, I didn't take it personally. But it made me realize how much raw emotion is associated with this. And it made me take out a lot that would have only gone to where you're saying.
So I, I would propose, since the Regional School District Planning Board's next full board meeting is on June 16th, am I right? I think. Then, we are meeting on the 10th. So we have plenty of time to get this to the regional school, to that board before the 16th in a form that we feel, all feel comfortable with. So with that said, if Bonnie's willing to take our suggestions to, and do a, a short rewrite, we can put that on our agenda for the next meeting. Bonnie?
I am going to say, given the constraints related to money, given the fact that I strongly believe from my discussions with Lucy, our discussions with Jane, even speaking, you know, with the ex officio, I mean, she's tried to end, so she can. I'm concerned that our suggestion would get there sooner than that. Because if we are going to support in any way we possibly can, the having of a facilitator, because there are people who've made it clear on the planning board, they see no need for a facilitator at all. So to further this, I, I'm really not happy that we go that far to that far along. And if there's a way we can show if our school committee is in support of getting this out sooner, I think it really would further.
Well, my, my impression from the meetings I've attended is that there's full intention of having a facilitator. The only holdup is we haven't had applicants and I volunteered along with Deb and anyone else who knows people who might be.
I've done the same, yeah.
Good, to try to find somebody. I don't sense that there's any intention on Lucy's part or any of the consultants coming in to avoid having a facilitator. It's just, it's, we haven't gotten her response.
I will just add to that.
Yeah.
To counter you there. It is clear that there are people on the planning board
Oh.
who absolutely are against. And therefore, I think if, if, if the full Southern Yorkshire Regional School District School Committee is, we, the four of us who are on this brought this to the full committee because we didn't wanna act without our full school committee. Therefore, if we want to support those who believe creative, good facilitation is critical, we should not hesitate to show our support as a full school committee.
Alright.
Early on. So my, my position would be, I'd like us to get it out there sooner rather than waiting to then. And I don't wanna do it, actually, that my feeling is that close to the next full school.
Alright, so.
A school.
Let's put this to a, a motion. Let's get the sense from the rest of the committee. Cause here's to me, there's two choices, cause this has to be an open session decision. We can entertain a motion to have a short Zoom meeting next week to see the final draft and approve it, or we wait till the week after to our regular meeting because people are not available or whatever. So if somebody wants to make a motion that we can vote on, I'm ready to entertain the motion. So Bonnie?
Were you going to do it all? You, you look like you would pass it.
I made a motion.
Go ahead.
I made a motion that we present the draft as presented.
Would the edit that was suggested or not?
Would the edit that is suggested above.
Leaving out the rest of the bottom of that paragraph?
No, just adding above the facilitator.
Yeah.
You're saying leave that bottom part in?
Alright. Anybody wants to second Art's motion?
I'll second it, Danell.
Okay, so now it's seconded to the purpose of discussion. Any discussion on, on that?
Art, does, what, Art, does your motion include that we not vote on it tonight and wait for my edit? And then we have, are you suggesting have a quick Zoom vote?
No, I, my suggestion is we vote on it tonight with the caveat of you adding just.
Okay. But that's, Bonnie refers to the facilitator. So Art is, Art is saying that I add the additional information as Hannah and Carrie Anne have suggested to give more detail about what we're envisioning as the facilitator.
Let me just point out that we have a meeting of the subcommittee on communications next Thursday. So that if we indeed have to postpone this and see what to come up with, that we could meet at that, around that time.
So we'd be tied into the communications subcommittee meeting and people could
Just come in for that.
Come in for that.
Just for that.
So you are, you are speaking against Art's motion?
I sure am, oh.
Alright, so let's take a vote on Art's motion.
Did you see with anyone else?
There's no other hands up. Danell's hand is white, I guess? Oh, okay.
It is? Oh, is it? No.
Let's have a vote on Art's motion or ask Art to amend the motion so that it can go to the floor. So would you entertain an amendment?
Let's just vote on the motion.
Okay, here we go.
Can we just do a recap of the motion? Cause I don't understand what I'm voting on right now.
The motion is to accept the letter as drafted tonight in a vote.
No.
Okay.
But we have to amend with the addition of the RF description.
You said what?
What a facilitator's role will be. Is that correct?
Yep.
I think that's in response to Hannah and Carrie Anne's suggestion that more clarification on the facilitator role would, would be good. Alright, does that satisfy you, Carrie Anne? Alright, so, but let's vote on the motion. Hannah?
No.
Kara, do you feel prepared to vote? Are you gonna abstain if not?
I'd like to abstain right now.
Okay. Carrie Anne?
I still feel confused of exactly what I'm voting on. I'm sorry, but, so I'm gonna say no because I'm confused.
She shouldn't be. But the motion is the letter as is with the addition of the information on the facilitator as requested by both you and Hannah and supported by Jenna.
Yes, that part, but my part is.
Not, not, not just that, but the motion as it stands is the letter as is with the addition of the facilitator details as discussed, as brought up by you, Carrie Anne, Hannah, and Jenna. That's what the motion is.
I would like the opportunity to read the next draft before I vote on it, so my answer is still no.
Dennis, here?
Yes.
Did you call Danell? I couldn't hear. Oh. Sorry, it keeps cutting out. Is my name called or not?
Okay, I still can't hear you, but if you called on me, then I do vote yes.
Jenna?
No, I wanna see it.
Okay. Bonnie?
Yes.
Okay, let me see where we stand now. Dennis, you voted. Okay, let me see where we stand now. Dennis, you voted?
I voted yes.
Okay, Carrie Anne was a no, Hannah was a no, Jen was a no, Jeff is not here. One, two, three, four, five guesses and three no's. So.
What about you?
I know, I'm stalling.
It does change both the way you want because you're not going to change the ballot.
Right, it's going, yeah. So I'm going to vote.
I don't think you have a quorum vote, basically.
Yes, we did. One, two, three, four, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight votes. And we have five guesses and three no's. So we already have a pass, no matter what I say. I love for it to go out. I also feel what Jen has said is important. So I guess I'm going to say no, but it still passes. So we're going to the, this draft with the additional things that Lucy crafted in describing what the facilitator would do included in this to help support the initiative of the board to have a facilitator included.
However, my understanding is not that it gets sent out based on it. You've given me direction, want to change, the full school committee still has to vote on it going out in the way with the edits.
I think they just voted that they agreed to it to go out with the edits.
Yep, that's what we voted on.
That's what they voted. So facilitator getting their best.
That's what I thought.
That's what I motioned.
Okay, you wanted to, okay.
I hope everybody understood that that's the way the vote was going.
Yep, I did.
Okay.
I did too.
Okay, thank you. It's very, I know it's my job to make sure everybody understands the motions. And if I fail to do that, I apologize. If somebody feels they didn't vote the way they intended, but I think it was pretty clear. Okay.
All right, let me ask you a question.
Sure, yeah.
I, if my eyes are open, I will do this tonight. And at this point, since this is public, is it legitimate for me now to send the revised one to you for distribution to the full school committee?
It doesn't matter. Well, yeah, I think the full school committee should see it. They've already voted to let it go, but they might as well have satisfaction of seeing.
They may think that the way I described the facilitator
Doesn't matter. They just trusted you to do that. So that's the way it is.
I'm just saying, if I were one of everybody else, I would want to see this. But hey, I'm going to make the changes, send it to Jane, and
And I'm going to look at Lucy's description of the facilitator as described and make sure that what you said matches that. So that we're not at odds with the direction that the board was going to be taking. So I don't think there's a problem.
It doesn't matter. Okay. Even if you find a discrepancy, it doesn't matter. Well, no, because you charged me with getting the facilitator part correct.
Okay, well, I will, I will back you up. I think this is sufficient, I mean, we, I think we've had sufficient input. So it's almost 5:00 o'clock and we've been here for two hours. Does anybody need a little break before we go into the subcommittee report?
No, those will probably be best.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So let's, thank you very much, Bonnie, everybody and the listening public.
Thank you, Jen.
For following us through our process. And so finance, Jeffrey is not here. I do not believe they met. Dennis Sears, do you have any comments about policy?
Well, we have not had a policy meeting, but what I was going to raise as a question, since I see Carrie Anne is still here, is that we haven't had our normal kind of distribution of, from MASC of proposed policy changes. And, but I know that Carrie Anne and several other people have been working on, you know, identifying parts of policy that need to be changed as part of our bias work. And I just wondered if, I was just going to ask Carrie Anne if you're at the point where maybe you have identified some that we could bring forward, you know, in a policy subcommittee meeting.
Not yet. It's been a busy time for me, Dennis. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Just ring the bell once you got some because basically, unlike many years, you know, there haven't been like any changes in mass general education law other than dealing with COVID and so forth. So we really don't have much, you know, policy that's kind of delivered to us for us to decide whether we want to take it or change it. But, you know, just ring my bell once you know you got, say, a few of those that we can bring forward.
Thank you, Dennis. Art, did you have anything?
No.
Superintendent Evaluation Committee did meet today and we have co-chairs who can report on that.
Carrie Anne?
Hello, Jenice, you go first, remember?
Okay, she forgot her first part, but that's okay. She's young. The first thing we want to tell everybody is that we have
Lower your mask and speak loudly so people can hear.
Okay, we have co-chairs. And that Carrie Anne and I, we are cooperating with the expertise that we can bring to this. And both of us are going to be running this subcommittee. And then I would like to, you all may know this, but we thought it should be clear on record certain things about the superintendent's evaluation. So if you already know, it'd be patient with us, okay? The first thing we want to say is that this work is given to the committee by the state. And the state has determined what, the standards, rubrics, et cetera. The format, I mean, the whole spiel. I hope whoever's recording this knows how to spell that word. And then the other thing is, we want to make clear that this is the end of year evaluation. Right? This is not an evaluation that's taking place during the year. This is the end of year evaluation. And its purpose, and this we want to make so clear, I'm citing somebody whose name I will not mention, is improvement. The purpose is to get us moving forward. It's based on, the evaluation would be based on the superintendent's goals. They're explicit. All right, they're indicators. All of this is explicit. We have it or will have it, right? On the website. And that what, the response to this, the work is based on the evidence that we find to support the goals that the superintendent has identified. All right? And then want to say that this process is collaborative because the subcommittee is doing some work and you committee members are required to fund to a survey that's going to be sent to you because we need to hear your voices. Right? Our role as a subcommittee is to understand the goals and the document that the superintendent has submitted, to gather the data, follow the procedures that the state has outlined for us, and prepare the report. Your role as committee, school committee members, is to provide data and to approve the report. So again, let me underline, your input is critical. Carrie Anne?
Bravo, Jenice. She just learned all that information since 8:00 this morning. Nice job. So as Jenice's co-chair of this, the superintendent evaluation subcommittee, what I would like for you all to do right now is to look at your calendars. If you can please try to find your calendar right now or at least find something that you can write with so this way you can take down these dates. Because this evaluation process needs to be submitted to the state by July 1st. So we have a very short period of time to get a lot done. So we are committed to getting the survey to the committee by the latest June 10th. I'm going to, I'm hoping to get it to you before then. It is going to be an electronic Survey Monkey link. If anybody has challenges with that, please let me know and we can create accommodations. However, it is, it's very, it makes our job easier if it's in this format because then we can cut and paste it into the narrative document that we have to create. The most important due date for you right now is June 17th. Find June 17th in your calendar and mark it up. That is when you need to get the superintendent evaluation back to me. You won't have another opportunity to participate after that date. This is, there's no, you know, I couldn't get my homework in on time. This is your drop dead date. I, Jenice and I are then going to work in the next two days after that to translate your answers into a narrative. Oh, let me go back for one thing. As what Jenice was saying in terms of that this is all like a state prescribed process, in the Survey Monkey, there's going to be all of these, we're going to be asking you really specific things based on goals that were set earlier in the year by the committee and by Beth of what what the opportunities for improvement, what was being, what the goals were and what was going to be focused on. So the language will be nothing like what I'm speaking or how Jenice speaks. It's very prescriptive school speak. So I'm hoping that on June 22nd or June 21st or June 23rd, the subcommittee will meet with Beth to discuss the report. And then at, for June 24th, there will be the public presentation of the evaluation to the full subcommittee. And then we can submit it early to the state on June 28th. So all of this just means that we have to be paying attention to dates and I greatly appreciate your input. And please ask any questions.
Yeah, since we have to vote on this, that means we'd be voting on this on the 24th of June then, right?
Yeah, that's our last scheduled meeting for the year.
Right, yep, okay.
I just want to say one thing that I failed to say at the very beginning. And that is, we want to make it clear that the evaluation of the superintendent is the responsibility of the school committee and only the school committee.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and I have to say, I was thinking, I had the chair of this meeting this morning because these two women didn't know anything about it, but they proved to me in five minutes' time that they were completely capable of taking over the entire thing. I couldn't be more pleased and excited to have these two new members so on top of this. And I have every optimistic thought that we're going to get this done and done well. So thank you very much. So the Community Relations and Public Schools Advocacy Subcommittee, I hear, is meeting next week. Have you had a meeting since our last meeting? Donell?
No, we haven't. So nothing to report.
Okay, it's great to have participation from the public at those meetings because we are trying to communicate with you. So it's posted on our website. Do you want to announce the time of it or you don't know yet?
We have it.
No, it's June 30th, well, yeah, next Thursday at 5:30.
Thank you. Great. Bonnie, there's any negotiations?
I am so happy that unless superintendent review this, otherwise I have nothing to report.
And then on the executive minutes review, which I am to find a time that all three of us has the need to be Thank you, Dennis, for giving me some dates and I will be back to you with final dates. So in my chairman's report, I just want to say that I'm encouraging the school committee, who I think are a bunch of brave and thoughtful people, to continue with a positive attitude toward what the work that's ahead of the planning board may be. We have Jake and his team coming in, plus a consulting firm that's national and has really deep reservoir and information. And I think there's great potential for us to discover some things that are interesting and valuable to us. And with the help of a facilitator, we hope to be in a comfort zone where we look forward to the meetings because what we're here for is for the kids. And as we know, rural education is a challenge and it's our job to make sure that we get everything we could to get the kids the best for them. So that's my report.
Okay, so that means it's my report. Baby, I just want to go back because there were two items in miscellaneous correspondence that we hopped over. One was from a former student who sent Maria Maycock, who sent the entire SBR State Community a postcard from her latest experience in Athens, so where she had been studying abroad. And I did happen to see her parents at National Honor Society last night and she is coming back this weekend. So hopefully we'll get to see her in person. But I thought it was really nice that she reached out to all of us. So that's in your packet. And also, we received a thank you note from the town of Sheffield for hosting the town meeting here. So I put that in the packet for the school committee to see. I just wanted to make a few comments tonight. One is on our pool testing experience. We did agree to do pool testing. It is an opt-in experience. We have been doing it for the last several weeks. And this is open for students and staff. I believe all of our pools, correct me if I'm wrong, saying if I get this wrong, it happened on Tuesday. I receive a report usually within 24 hours. And I'm happy to report that all pools have been negative for all the weeks that we have been doing it. So I just wanted to let the school committee know that that has been an active process. On Saturday morning, Mr. Dejarin and I attended, along with the New Marlboro representative, the New Marlboro Town Meeting, where the budget was passed with full support of the community. So with that saying, we have now officially a budget. We still have the town of Edgemont's meeting on June 8th. But we are not anticipating anything other than support, which we've received from all communities this year. So that is wonderful news. We talked about, we talked about the National Honor Society induction ceremony last night, which was lovely. I had an opportunity to speak at it. But I also just wanted to bring to your attention that there are lots of other events that are up on our event calendar that you can attend. So please feel free to take a look and join us at any of these at the end of the year. They're always so rewarding. And it was really, really a nice experience. A little worn, but very nice. And the last one is that today was the Mass Association of School Superintendents Um, and the last one is that today was the Mass Association of School Superintendents, uh, virtual spring meeting. Uh, the session and all of the work of the superintendent's organization is focused on racial equity, diversity, and inclusion, and developing a strategy. Um, and, uh, specifically, what, what was, um, presented was um, a strategy that is an organization-wide, long-term strategy designed to ensure that every school in Massachusetts learns to model the anti-racist inclusive practice required for every student to learn and drive. So this meeting today was just a glimpse into the type of work that the superintendents are doing, um, which in turn will be the work that all districts, um, are doing. And, um, the highlight for me was actually two student presenters today, um, who were a part of Project 351, which is an organization that works very closely, uh, we participated in, in this district, but they work very closely with, uh, the superintendent's organization, and the two students who spoke were incredibly articulate, um, energized, um, inspiring, uh, and they are going to be our trainers. They are actually going to train us on how to do this work in the district. So I'm really looking forward to that experience in the summer, which will be in person, but I thought I shared that thing. It's all work that, um, we're very much engaged in as well, so. My report.
Thank you very much. And now we need to drumroll, because.
Oh, yeah.
Ain't that right?
Um.
There was a special Sheffield town meeting.
Yes.
Do we know if the air conditioning?
I, um, I don't know what it says of the air conditioning.
They're working on.
Yeah, the, and.
Just trying to get somebody here as quickly as possible.
Okay, so I think, I mean, if you want me to do it, or if somebody wants to let the select board know that they should check in terms of.
It's not until.
Planning on holding.
Not until the 7th, right?
Right.
I, yeah, I don't think we're there yet. I think we, I think we'll be okay by then.
Okay.
I'll, I'll let, yeah.
You'll let them?
If, if not, but I, I think we'll be okay.
But they may be sending something out much sooner.
Well, I mean, we gotta see if we can get it fixed, but he hasn't, he hasn't thrown up the flag yet, so.
As long as we know.
Yeah.
And I, I don't think we're having a pregame.
Not today.
Okay, and then, now the drumroll.
Here I am.
Didn't write a report this time, because I wanted to give you up-to-the-minute info, um, of just today. About, um, kindergarten screenings, which are happening on June 21st.
Can you hear, can you hear Sandy?
Can you hear me? I use my teacher voice.
Okay, you might have to steal hold.
Can they hear me?
Okay.
June 21st and 22nd are going to be the kindergarten screenings, and they're going to be, we have 65 students were, um, that we have on our calendar. Um, so that's 65 incoming kindergarteners. Um, where it's going to be, um, run like our former kindergarten fairs, which we did back about 10 years ago, and we're looking forward to inviting families, uh, parents here, um, that'll be remaining outside and getting some overviews of our programs, where the students are evaluated, um, by our teachers and other professionals that work with us. So we're looking forward to that, and as I said, 65 students, so that's great. Um, we are also busy planning our summer programs, and I just wanted to give you a quick overview of that. In accordance with what the governor and commissioner, um, put out as guidance on April 30th, we're looking at how to best, uh, provide our programming based on our needs in our district. Um, we're trying to, uh, invite students to fill in gaps that have been created by, um, participation and accessibility needs created over the past, this past year. Um, we're doing some first-tier reading, writing, and math and social-emotional instruction. And we are also, um, partnering with, um, Camp Russell, which is part of the Boys and Girls Club of the Berkshire, Pittsfield. Um, also, as I mentioned before, Flying Cloud, we've invited, as at this point, and I'm only speaking about special education and, um, elementary, uh, it's 120 students have been invited. Currently, we have, um, 46 that have committed. And we just put out more letters, um, um, second-tier letters went out last week, the week of May 17th. A third-tier letters will be going out, um, soon after we, um, reach the deadline for the response for the second tier. And, um, we reached, we had some outreach regarding a summer step-up grant, which is also part of the governor's guidance, and we received some feedback today that they'd love to talk to us next week about how we can utilize, um, the potential funds that could be offered to us as we collaborate with the other organizations to provide opportunities to students this summer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions for campaign?
Sandy, want to see that early childhood.
Uh, we can't move.
The 9.
The 9?
Yes, 1:45.
All right, I will just turn it to the main. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, I, I wanted to comment, because I want to shout out for Sandy's work, because in some districts, they have after-school coordinators, one or two of them, they have grant writers, and then they have a Sandy. Sandy is all four of those people in one person. That's what our small district expects from our administrators, and they deliver, and they don't get the recognition that they deserve, but I was informed of this disparity today, and I really have always been in awe of what could get done, but now it's even more aggressive, so thank you very much.
Thank you for saying that. You're welcome.
All right, so I see for, uh, future agenda items, we have, we're gonna be working on our summer, summer meeting schedule. So we have two more meetings coming up ahead. We, we're definitely gonna be working on our superintendent evaluation on the 24th. Is there anything else that you feel we need to, um, add to our agenda list, um, before the end of this fiscal year? Of course, you can always write to me, uh, with suggestions, and if, if there's just, we're all a little bit gazed from almost two and a half hours in our seats, so, uh, uh, be welcoming anyone's suggestions by email. I'll take a motion to adjourn. Art, is it a hurry for that?
I had a question.
We both have questions. Go ahead.
Oh, yeah.
You're first.
Art, I didn't agree with you, so I'll give you a break. Go ahead.
It's not a question.
Yeah.
Um, the playwork theme, that was.
Oh, my gosh, yes.
It was phenomenal.
It was phenomenal.
It was phenomenal. It, I'm so happy that I got a chance to watch it, because it was, it was really great. Uh, I can't, the work that went into that thing, it, it was, it was really special. So kudos to everybody that was involved in that production.
I have a question based on that.
Yeah.
I bought a ticket and then we underused someplace else. Is there any way, because they said they weren't putting it online, is there any way planned at all?
I have no idea. I, I don't know. I saw that myself. I had to make sure that I was.
I think it's a licensing, but I do, you know, I just wanted to add.
Well, if we could find out.
Yeah, let's try to find out about that. I want to add, um, to Art's statement, because some of us have been around watching these kids over the years. I've actually worked with some of them who had huge problems as five and six-year-olds. Uh, the feeling of watching what they put out with their hearts and souls and talent was remarkable, and that's what our small school allows for development, and the people who would probably normally be in the background, be front and center on the stage. So, um, I actually gave my Sunday afternoon to watching that, and I didn't regret a minute of it. So it's a great, I, I'm glad you brought that up, because I didn't mention it, and, um, it was remarkable. So now can we adjourn?
No.
No, oh, you have something else to say.
No, I, a question.
Sure.
When we do this superintendent's evaluation and the work on it.
Yeah.
Is that executive session, or is that?
Unfortunately.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll give you guidance somewhere. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
From Art. Second from Bonnie. Uh, Hannah?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Ariane?
Yes.
Dennis Sears?
Yes.
I think Danelle is not there anymore. Uh, Janice?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
And Art?
Yes.
And Jane, thank you for those who came in and those who persevere, uh, in, uh, the audience there, and have a lovely evening, and, um, we will see you again soon.